Good evening and welcome to the July 25th meeting of the Bella Vista City Council. My apologies if I sniffle and cough occasionally. I've managed to pick up a summer cold, which is never fun. We'll begin with the invocation by Pastor Jamie Alexander, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Invite you to join me in prayer. Faithful God, we thank you that as we gather here tonight, we gather here in concern for our city, for our state, and for our nation. And we also gather in concern for our world. We ask you, Father, to bring peace into the chaos and the confusion of these days. We pray for our city and our policemen. We ask you, Father, to place a hedge of protection around each of them. And as deny its decisions and discussions take place, Father, may you bless it in love, with encouragement, and with unity. We thank you for the people that you've called us to be. Help us to be the very best we can be. And we offer this meeting to you in the wonderful, saving name of your Son, our Lord and our Savior Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we'll begin with the roll call. Alderman Morgan?
Here.
Alderman Flynn?
Here.
Alderman Anderson?
Here.
Alderman King?
Here.
Alderman Wozniak?
Here.
Alderman Wilson?
Here.
All present in the conference. One of the pleasures of being mayor is the ability to swear in new police officers. And tonight, we're just going to take a moment out before we begin the actual council session. And I'm going to ask Jeff Bartlett to come forward, please. Mr. Bartlett has just joined us. He's so new, he doesn't have a uniform yet, but he's about to go off to school for 13 weeks, so we thought that we would do this now. I'm going to give you this, and I'll lead you in it. Hi, Jeffrey Bartlett.
Jeffrey Bartlett.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the State of Arkansas?
The Constitution of the State of Arkansas.
And the Code of Ordinances of the City of Bella Vista?
And the Code of Ordinances of the City of Bella Vista.
That I will faithfully and impartially perform?
That I will faithfully and impartially perform.
The duties of police officer for the City of Bella Vista Police Department?
The duties of police officer of the City of Bella Vista Police Department.
In Benton County, Arkansas?
In Benton County, Arkansas.
Upon which I am now about to enter?
Upon which I am now about to enter?
To the best of my ability?
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God. Thank you, sir.
And welcome to his family as well. I'm glad you're able to join us.
There's a special girl back there.
Okay. Next is the citizen input, George Tracy.
Before I start, though, congratulations.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, everybody. I'm up here to talk about this accessory ordinance. I had a written statement, but I can't get through it in the three minutes. But I've been here for the first reading, the second readings, and I've heard citizens for and against this. The people that have heard against this ordinance has based their input based on the POA already in the ACC having established ordinance, or established guidelines. The people for this ordinance has discussed about how these two properties look within Bella Vista. And when you go by looks, that's aesthetics. And I think I've heard the city attorney say, "We don't need to vote on something that's aesthetic." City planner, everybody on here, has talked about look when they talk about size, height, color. That's looks. That's aesthetics. So therefore, please don't brief, or vote on your ordinance based on aesthetics, because what's going to happen is a POA member is going to go to the POA and get a building permit granted off of the established legal covenants. They're going to get granted. They're going to go to the city. They're going to be denied that ordinance because of city ordinances. Leaves that property owner one recourse, and that's a lawsuit. And then it's going to go in front of a judge with all discoverable items to make a determination on who's right and who's wrong. So therefore, if you, tonight, if you're going to vote on this, look at yourself in the mirror. Think about it. If you're going to vote because of aesthetics, then vote this ordinance down. And I highly encourage Jason, the city attorney, to speak up. If you are basing it on aesthetics, it's not the right thing to do. There's other ways of doing this. Make the ACC enforce their rules and their guidelines. But I've heard everybody up here, to include, I mean, Mr. Mayor, you talked to real estate people, asking whether or not it would raise the property values or lower the property values, based on how this property looks. That's all in the eyes of the buyer and the seller. So again, let the POA take care of the aesthetics. They've been doing it for years, even though they need to do a better job of enforcing it. But the city don't need to pass an ordinance based on aesthetics. Please do not do that, because when the lawsuit comes about, it's going to be against the City of Bella Vista, and it will also be, every one of you will be named in that lawsuit as well, because you all are passing this ordinance. So please don't do this. Do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you, George. Roger Narbick?
The first reason I'm here is a member that was here a month ago. There were 10 people that spoke, four against the ordinance. As the newspaper reported, he was the only one, James Brooks, that said he was fine with not having an ordinance. Well, he contacted me and asked me if I would just set the record straight. He is vehemently opposed to these large buildings. So it was 10 out of 10. What Mr. Tracy just said, I have a lot to agree with there, that I think the POA and the ACC had something that worked very fine for the best part of 50 years. We didn't get into any trouble until they stopped wanting to enforce it, and we started to. And I think aesthetics is important. I don't know what Mr. Tracy means about that, but when you're in a residential neighborhood, you don't go to a residential neighborhood with the idea of you're going to be living next door to a couple of huge storage buildings, and you don't always know that ahead of time. I started thinking about what would work the best, and I think what Alderman Flynn had proposed last time was about as far as you can go, 720 square feet, if you're trying to try to make this a one-size-fits-all. But one-size-fits-all, now we're up to a proposal of 1,000 square feet. This one-size-fits-all doesn't work as well as what Alderman Flynn had proposed way, way back when. I have a daughter with some large accessory buildings, but she's on 23 acres. I have a son with large accessory buildings. He's on 10 acres. Nothing wrong with it. Plenty of room. I have a large accessory building. It's on some large acreage. So what Alderman Flynn had proposed, and was apparently asked to increase on size recently, I think it's getting to be ridiculous, because you can't have the same size restriction depending upon if you have a large acreage or a small acreage. Linda Young, her 4.7 acres, I believe it is, why should she be restricted to something in the 1,500-square-foot area of somebody with a third of an acre? It's 1,000 feet. It just doesn't make sense. I would be against what is being proposed tonight merely because we went up again from 720 to 1,000. I think you need to go back and think about what Alderman Flynn had originally proposed. It has to be based upon what kind of acreage you have.
Thank you, Roger.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. George Holmes?
George Holmes, 14 Brixton. I want to start by, I'm going to hand you all a few pictures, and I just want you to pass them down if you would. That is my house on 14 Brixton. I own four lots. The pictures are only showing three of the lots. My house was built on the lot sideways to begin with. The two lots I bought in front of it, I put a septic system, new septic system, in the first lot. And the second lot that's up from my house is a garage, 1,200-square-foot garage, two-story. Now, looking at the pictures from the front road, it looks like normal size. From the left-hand side, because the topography of the ground falling off, it's 31 foot tall. So I guess when you're talking about the height limits, you need to take in consideration the topography and where the measurements are going to be from. The other issue that I'm seeing with the ordinance is, and I've talked to Chris a little bit about this, but in your ordinance, you're reading for a residential lot, only not being able to have a structure built in front of the front plane. You probably need to clear that up on townhouses, or we've built the last carport we're going to build in front of a townhouse out here. This particular lot, the way it was built, I had to build in the front plane of the house. And after you all have seen those pictures, I would dare anybody to value that I devalued my property in any means by what I built out there with this thing. My opinion is, you're trying to do a city ordinance because of a couple of bad situations. It is very possible, we live in a homeowners association, we have rules and regulations that they can control aesthetics, and when it becomes in front of them, if you'll notice, I built mine to match my house identical, down to the doors, down to the lights, down to the paint job, down to the windows that were in it, okay? Everything in that is identical. That's the kind of structure, when I was on the ACC board, I looked at before I would approve a substructure of a house. We need to get back to that means, and I'm not sure you can get there with Buddy. I think you all need to have a conversation with John, and put a committee together with him, and try to get this thing resolved through the association versus trying to do it through an ordinance. With the ordinance, we just do not have the topography to be able to set down rules that's going to be fair to everybody. And I've done several other ones in this village. In this scenario, I did not bring their pictures, because I'm not sure the people want me to get them involved. But it's a case where substructures or carports, garages, can be built in front of the plane. If they're built to look good, they're not an eyesore, and they're not going to devalue any of the property values in that area.
Thanks, George.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item seven. It's the approval of the minutes. George, do you want those back? These are the approval of the minutes of June 27, 2016, which are in your packet. Are there any errors, omissions, or comments? I would then entertain a motion to approve. So move.
Second.
All those in favor show of hands. Against, same sign. Onto the financial reports. We do not have a financial report this month. The treasurer was unable to close the books in time, so next month, we will actually have two months to go through. I'd entertain a motion to suspend the rules and read all proposed ordinances and resolutions on the agenda by title only.
So move.
Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. Alderman Wozniak?
Yes.
Alderman Wilson?
No.
Alderman Morgan?
Yes.
Alderman Flynn?
Yes.
Alderman Anderson?
Yes.
Alderman King?
Yes.
Carries, 5-1. Thank you. The first ordinance is an ordinance amending Section 18-20B of the municipal code regulating the dumping of tree cuttings and other materials and for other purposes. This is the third reading tabled from the June meeting. Mr. Sunnison, you were asked to engage a PE to be able to determine if we're in compliance. I gather we're in that process now, but the PE has not been able to get to this yet. Is that correct? Okay. So my recommendation to council would be to table this until the August meeting, so that the PE has an opportunity to be able to determine if we're in compliance.
I move that we table until the August meeting.
Any further discussion? Okay. Alderman Morgan?
Yes.
Alderman Flynn?
Yes.
Alderman Wozniak?
Yes.
Alderman Anderson?
Yes.
Alderman King?
Yes.
Alderman Wilson?
Yes.
Carries, 6-0. The next ordinance is amending Section 2-345, sale or exchange of property of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Bella Vista to clarify ambiguities. This is the third reading. If you remember, this clarifies the sale of surplus property. Is there any discussion at all? If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
So move.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please. Alderman Wozniak?
Yes.
Alderman Anderson?
Yes.
Alderman Flynn?
Yes.
Alderman Morgan?
Yes.
Alderman Wilson?
Yes.
Alderman King?
Yes.
Carries, 6-0. The next ordinance is an ordinance amending municipal code Section 109-166, regulating accessory structures in Section 109-248, regulating fence location and for other purposes. Alderman Flynn, I understand that you have a new amendment?
Yes, I have an amendment that's slightly modified from last month, based on some input we got at that meeting.
First, we need to have a motion to amend, and then a second before we can discuss it.
Okay. So would you like to give a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to amend.
Okay, and I'll do some legal, excuse me, things here I have to do as a lawyer. I believe, speaking with Alderman Flynn, is desire you have a written, it is in written form here in front of you. He is moving to amend the entire ordinance as it's been presented, or proposed ordinance as it's presented at this point, to strike everything after the ordaining clause, and to insert a Section 1, that Section 109-3 definitions of the municipal code shall be amended to read as follows and as provided in the written document. Section 2, the same language as relates to Section 109-2, 42. Adding a Section 3, which would read the same, amending Section 109-166 as provided in the written amendment. And furthermore, adding a Section 4, which would amend Section 109-248 of the municipal code as presented in the written information.
Is that, is that what you wanted to do?
Yes.
Okay. I think that's the motion. There's been a second. No second?
I'll second.
Okay.
Now, debate on the motion.
All right, now debate on the motion.
I thought I might have a little explanation. You know, there's been some people who very much wanted this, and we've heard from some citizens who did not want it. I'm not going to address every single comment everybody made, you know, at the different meetings. There's been quite a few. But I've attempted to make a compromise that would accomplish something positive and still honor some of the concerns that people have. The way this amendment reads now, you cannot have anything in the front plane, which was one of the problems that first started this. It can be 25-foot-high or as high as a home. It can't be higher than the home. It can be, we now allow people to put, put them on adjacent lots. It's 720 square feet, which is existing law, and on adjacent lots, we've allowed it to go up to 1,000 square feet. And I feel like I'm getting close to a compromise. You know, you can tell when it's a compromise when everybody's a little unhappy. As you heard tonight, some of my supporters are a little unhappy about the 1,000 square feet. And we did make an exception for boathouses or docks, which was something that had come up recently. So I've attempted to do something that would protect people, keep Bella Vista a beautiful place, and still allow people to build things that they'd like to build. I agree with some of the commentators that that's a challenge to do, to describe all that. I'd love it to, if the ACC would do what they should be doing. We all signed deeds that have restrictions in it, to which, you know, I've had many, many citizens comment to me, what's happened to Bella Vista? We used to have, you know, people really enforcing things, and now we don't. But I don't know how to make some other entity do what they're supposed to do. So I'm trying to keep Bella Vista beautiful when other people apparently aren't so motivated. So that's the way I look at it.
Okay, any further debate?
We've heard from several, yeah, we've heard, we've heard from a dozen or so individuals who have stepped up and spoken in favor of limiting buildings and limiting the size and locations. The first time this came around, a couple of months ago, we received about 27 various emails from individuals, some who came to speak and some who didn't, who were very much opposed to putting more restrictions on it. As the gentleman said there about his buildings that were on three different lots, the topography is a very, very hinky issue. And Mr. Flynn's ordinance does and does not really address that in most areas. We're not a cookie-cutter community. We're built on the hills and the hollers. We can't make cookie-cutter laws and ordinances that are going to apply dead, you know, dead-bang to everybody. We're going to have to be a wee bit more accommodating for folks who have topography and size of lots and shape of lots that are inhospitable to construction. I think that's the best way you can put it. I don't have a dog in this fight. I really don't. I, my lot is going, is up for, is gone. I mean, it's not going to be, there's nothing else I could do with it if I wanted to, just the way it's laid out. But it is a good example of what a lot of people are stuck with. You've got virtually no front yard because of easements from a roadway. You've got virtually no side yard because your driveway is right there onto the street. You've got virtually no backyard because it drops into a ravine and a septic system off on the other side. So where are you going to put your, you know, where are you going to put your building? I mean, everybody's focused on these big buildings. This ordinance is not going to cover just big buildings. It's going to cover everything from boat docks, which they've made an amendment for, they've made a change for, which is good. It's going to cover everything from a floating deck to a fire pit, I mean, to a barbecue patio. Anything you want to build is an accessory structure outside of your principal residence. And because a few people are upset because folks needed some storage space and built it, I don't see that's justifiable to limit what everybody else can do in their own backyard, front yard or side yard. We're going to have to be a little more adaptable. We're not a gated, high-rise community. We are a residential, rural suburban landscape, and we're going to have to deal with it. And this ordinance, as is, isn't quite going to cut it.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman?
Two comments, I guess. I guess I'm not 100% sure we're there yet. I think you heard one comment tonight from one of the individuals that probably is not taken care of in this ordinance, and that's the townhouses, the structures on the townhouses. And we're not talking about just a few townhouses. There's over 1,500 townhouses, I think, in Bella Vista. And I don't believe we take care of that very well. I saw a swimming pool today with a little cabana, or whatever you call, next to a swimming pool, changing room, that kind of thing. I don't know how that fits into this structure. I don't know if we're going to consider it similar to a dock in that it would be in addition to, or whatever. So I guess I think there may be just a few things that still need tweaking on it. And I'm sort of with Allen on the size. I guess I'm not 100% sure what we need to do on size. The size of buildings, if you, if you build a house on those lots that have those storage structures, as they're being referred to on, and the architecture was not desired by the neighbors, they might be just as unhappy with the house there as they are with the, with the garage. And yet, we would let the house be built there. So I'm not 100% sure how I would, well, I am 100% sure. I would not vote for this ordinance the way it is now. I don't have a fix yet. I think it would help us a lot if we would get this written in a complete ordinance with the changes asterisk or something, rather than this piecemeal stuff that we go through every time. I'm about as confused as some of the rest of us, I think, as to where all this fits and what we're actually changing. So I guess what I'm saying is, I think there are a couple of areas that we haven't hit very well. One, we've outlawed completely, the way I read it, which would be the townhouse, garages. Maybe, and I hate to say it, it still needs a little work, and we need to work on it at least another period of time.
Further discussion?
Well, I'd like to make a couple of comments. The gentleman that said the ACC has not done their job in controlling the aesthetics, he's absolutely right, but we have no control over that. If they would step up to the plate and do their job, it would be a lot easier for us. On the other hand, I'd like to remind the council that not all the property within the City of Bella Vista falls in the POA. So we need some city regulation. And the gentleman that has very nice-looking accessory structure on his property, we cannot depend that all people will build something that looks that nice, and the ACC will allow it. They have allowed some things that have initiated this discussion over eight months ago. And if they had done their job, we wouldn't be here.
Thank you. Further discussion? Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Roll call. This is on the amendment. This is on the amendment. Alderman Morgan?
Yes.
Alderman Flynn?
Yes.
Alderman Wozniak?
Yes.
Alderman Anderson?
No.
Alderman King?
No.
Alderman Wilson?
No.
Mayor, it is a three-to-three. You may choose to vote if you so desire. I would vote no. Okay. Well, then you don't have to vote. So it will fail for lack of four votes, and the amendment is not agreed to. Are there any other amendments? I had a feeling that perhaps you might want to entertain a motion to let it go for another month and do some more work on it?
I would like to make a motion to table it for at least one more month, to attempt to come up with something that covers the to come up with something that covers the few questions I believe we still have left.
Okay.
Second.
Second, thank you. Debate on this, on this amendment?
I think that's fine. I did want to make just one comment. You mentioned something about swimming pools. I don't claim to know every ordinance inside out, but when all this started a long time ago, it was stated definitively that swimming pools aren't allowed in the front yard.
That's right.
Swimming pools and something else. I forget what the other...
Playground equipment.
No, I have trouble with that. I would agree with that. My question on swimming pools is, are we going to consider them like a dock? That they could have a swimming pool on one lot and not be considered the accessory structure? A swimming pool with a little cabana or what? Or is that the entire accessory structure they can have on? I don't think it's answered in here. Docks, we took care of. We took them out of the equation. I'm not saying we want to with swimming pools. I'm just saying I think it should be at least considered. That was my question on swimming pools.
My only other comment was, well, when you mentioned maybe we should work on it some more, I felt like saying, what do you mean, "we"? Because actually, I've been working on it, and everybody else has been missing in action.
We will be happy to join you, John, and we'll put out the word to the newspapers the day we're going to work on it. So, let me know when you want to work on it again.
All right.
If this passes.
Me too.
Fair enough. Any further discussion? Okay. So, we have a motion on the table to table.
Motion to table to next month, I guess, to the next regular meeting.
Okay. So, we'll have a rule called.
Alderman Wilson?
Yes.
Alderman King?
Yes.
Alderman Anderson?
Yes.
Alderman Wozniak?
Yes.
Alderman Flynn?
Yes.
Alderman Morgan?
I have no other way to vote but yes, but this is very frustrating. This has gone on for over eight months, and I think we need to do something that will bring this to immediate closure. Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. The next ordinance is amending the municipal code regulations concerning public notification procedures in Section 109-38D2 for conditional use permits, Section 10940C2 and E5 for zoning ordinance amendments, Section 109-42C for variances, and Section 109-45 for general notification requirements and for other purposes. This is the second reading. If you remember, this came to us from the Planning Commission, and its purpose is to reduce the burdens on the residents when requesting a variance. The next ordinance is accepting and confirming easements dedic...
We need to ask if there's any debate on that.
Okay, is there any debate?
They're in the second reading. Maybe you can move on to the next one.
All right. Seeing no debate or hearing no debate. Accepting and confirming easements dedicated to the public on parcel 18-072014-004, known as 8512 Stevenson Place and for other purposes. This is the first reading. Mr. Sunnison, I understand that staff would like this to be expedited to third and final reading. There's a closing coming up. Are there any comments that you would like to share with council about this particular one?
Sorry about that, guys. The Planning Commission reviewed this in early June, I'm sorry, late July, early July, July, it was this month. This is a pretty standard and straightforward lot split. All the requirements of our subdivision code are being met, and that's why it's in front of you this evening.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Recommend suspension of the rules and move to third...
Move to third and final?
Third and final reading.
Thank you.
Second then.
Any discussion? Rule called.
All right. Alderman Morgan?
Yes.
Alderman Flynn?
Yes.
Alderman Anderson?
Yes.
Alderman King?
Yes.
Alderman Wilson?
Yes.
Alderman Wozniak?
Yes.
Carries six zero.
Thank you, Al. Now move to third and final reading. Accepting and confirming easements dedicated to the public on parcel 18-072014-004, known as 8512 Stevenson Place and for other purposes. Any further discussion? Motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Any final discussion? Rule called, please.
All right. Alderman Wozniak?
Yes.
Alderman Anderson?
Yes.
Alderman Wilson?
Yes.
Alderman King?
Yes.
Alderman Flynn?
Yes.
Alderman Morgan?
Yes.
Carries six zero.
Okay, the next ordinance is repealing ordinance number 2016-08 authorizing borrowing funds pursuant to Arkansas Constitutional Amendment 78 for the acquisition of a 2016 KME custom pumper fire truck. Just a few words on this. We have inspected the truck. The vendor has to make some more changes. We were ready to sign the loan documents and discovered that in the ordinance itself, there had been a due date of the 25th of June. That date had come and gone. So, we could not sign the loan documents. We looked at other possibilities, and if you notice, if you've been through your package, the very last item tonight is a resolution, which we'll talk about a little later, but basically purchasing the truck outright because the money has to be wired tomorrow. So, it kind of got away from us, but in order to be able to move to this resolution, we have to legally repeal the ordinance. And I would also like to move to third and final reading in order to get this happening. So, I would entertain a motion to suspend the rules and go to third and final reading.
So moved. Second.
Any further discussion? Rule called on suspending the rules.
Okay. Alderman Morgan?
Yes.
Alderman Flynn?
Yes.
Alderman Wozniak?
Yes.
Alderman Anderson?
Yes.
Alderman King?
Yes.
Alderman Wilson?
Yes.
Carries six zero.
Thank you. I'll move to third and final reading. Repealing ordinance number 2016-08 authorizing borrowing funds pursuant to Arkansas Constitutional Amendment 78 for the acquisition of a 2016 KME custom pumper fire truck. I'd entertain a motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
Any further discussion?
Let me, let me just explain something to make sure everyone understands, just from a legal perspective. We're repealing this because you don't want to have paid cash and still authorize us to borrow the money. So, that's just going to get rid of that and make sure there's no loose end there. That's the reason why we need to do this, so.
And Mr. Jurtson?
All right. Alderman Wozniak?
Yes.
Alderman Anderson?
Yes.
Alderman Flynn?
Yes.
Alderman Morgan?
Yes.
Alderman Wilson?
Yes.
Alderman King?
Yes.
Carries six zero.
All right. The next piece of business is amending resolution number 2016-03 designating authorizing dispersment officers for the city of Bella Vista for the calendar year 2016. On June 30th, we unfortunately bade farewell to Jane Wilmes after many years of faithful service, but with her went her ability to sign checks and other documents. We now have Melissa Cruz on board as our new HR person, and this is authorizing Melissa to replace Jane's signature on checks, etc.
Recommend approval of the resolution as presented.
Thank you.
Second.
Any further discussion? Mr. Jurtson?
All right. Alderman Wilson?
Yes.
Alderman King?
Yes.
Alderman Anderson?
Yes.
Alderman Wozniak?
Yes.
Alderman Flynn?
Yes.
Alderman Morgan?
Yes.
Carries six zero.
The next resolution is accepting the resignation of G. Allen King as Alderman of the city of Bella Vista for Ward Three, Position One, and declaring a vacancy. Before we move any further, I'll thank you for your years of service. It's greatly appreciated. Thank you. Is there any discussion?
I just want to say thank you to all the folks in Bella Vista who have allowed me to serve them, and I appreciate their confidence in me as a representative, and it's been a joy and a very good learning experience to work on this council for the years. I've enjoyed it, and I've gained from it.
All right, thank you.
God bless you each.
Thank you.
And the resignation would be effective July 31st, so if you vote in approval, he doesn't have to get up and leave at this moment, so. He's still on the council until the end of the month. There doesn't need to be a motion and a second, and Alderman King is going to recuse from any consideration of voting on this issue.
I think we have a motion and a second, yes?
Nope.
Okay. If we could have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Wilson, thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Jurtson?
All right. Alderman Morgan?
Yes, reluctantly.
Alderman Flynn?
Yes.
Alderman Wozniak?
Yes.
Alderman Anderson?
Yes.
Alderman Wilson?
Yes.
Carries five zero.
Thank you. The next resolution is reducing the salary of compensation of Alderman Larry Wilson to $0 for the... Sorry? I'm sorry.
Before we go on, the declaring of vacancy, we now have a vacancy at an Alderman position. I believe the lawyer probably told you at the work session what steps could be taken to fill it, right? Has a decision been made yet, or are we going to have a discussion concerning that? I didn't see, the reason I'm asking now is I didn't see it in the agenda.
Well, the, I can tell you, I'll get you a copy of it. I passed out a little memo at the work session. It's up to the council to fill the vacancy, and you have a lot of latitude in how you go about doing that. What was stated to the public at the work session was that interested people should, who live in the ward, need to send a letter and a resume directed to the mayor, and then, I'm not sure exactly, at some point, it will be up to the council, so obviously, you will be involved, how that's going to happen. I don't know if that's been worked out yet.
What is the deadline for filing to run in November?
The filing period starts this week at some point.
Starts Friday.
July 19th, straight through for three weeks.
Through August, August through August 19th. It starts Friday and ends August 19th.
I will tell you that at the moment, I do have two resumes sitting on my desk, and I've been told that there are two more coming. It would be my plan to possibly as soon as the end of this week to cut it off, and then I would send the resumes out to everyone, and I would invite the candidates to come to the next work session so that they can be interviewed. And then, at the, at the August meeting, we would fill the vacancy. Mr. Wozniak?
I may not be here for the next work session, seeing I'll be out of town, but I will throw this out, and you can discuss it or not. We're so close to, when the election comes up, my recommendation would be to leave it open until November.
That is an option.
Whoever gets elected in November, we move him in two months early.
That is certainly an option.
You're only looking at, by the time we get around to doing this, you're looking at next month. You're only looking at two more months after that.
That certainly is an option.
Are the resumes that you have received, individuals who are running for office as well?
One is. He has indicated his...
We don't know yet because they haven't started filing yet.
Yes, they started filing.
The concern I have a little bit is you do give somebody a leg up if you appoint them, and then they run as an Alderman. They can put Alderman on the ballot.
I hate to...
Not sure that's bad, good, or indifferent.
I hate to be a lawyer here, but this discussion isn't on the agenda, and so we need to... If you want to suspend the rules, and there's really no resolution or ordinance attached to it, but we really are operating outside the rules by having this little colloquy about this right now.
Let it go to the end, and maybe we can add to the agenda.
At the discussion, at the end of the meeting, you might be able to do something like that.
We'll try that.
Okay. Carrying on with the next resolution, reducing the salary compensation of Alderman Larry Wilson to $0 for the remainder of the calendar year 2016 at his request, and amending the 2016 annual city budget to authorize the transfer of funding otherwise designated for the compensation of Alderman Wilson to the Bella Vista Police Department. Larry, very admirable. Any discussion?
Discussion would include, when we say the compensation, authorize the transfer of funding otherwise designated for the compensation of Alderman Wilson, does that include the employer's share of taxes?
It includes whatever would be sent to him in compensation, so.
How about what's sent to the tax bureau?
Well, it says what it says. It wasn't intended to mean the payroll tax savings that the city would have by not having to pay its portion of the payroll tax. It's only the portion that would be paid to him as compensation.
Net. Any further discussion? Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
And it should be reflected in the minutes, and it was discussed at the work session. This was requested by Alderman Wilson, and a letter was presented and is on file with the city treasurer making this request, which makes it legal. Otherwise, you couldn't do it.
I would like to note in the minutes also that we're talking about only the compensation that goes to Mr. Wilson in that amount.
Right. Okay, we're ready for a vote?
Alderman Wozniak?
Yes.
Alderman Anderson?
Yes.
Alderman King?
Yes.
Alderman Wilson?
Yes.
Alderman Morgan?
Yes.
Alderman Flynn?
Yes.
Carries six zero.
Thank you. The next resolution is authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to enter into a contract with Frost Oil Company in an amount of .02 cents per gallon markup over the seller's wholesale price plus freight for purchase of fuel for the city fuel depot. If you've been out there, you've seen that the pumps are up, the tanks are in the ground, and Superintendent Button has been speaking to another, a number of contractors plus other cities. The markup of .02 cents is standard. The freight, in case you're interested, is .0208 per gallon for unleaded and .0240 per gallon for diesel. It, it should be noted that the price of gas will fluctuate, but the margin limitations by this always remain the same. You might also be interested in knowing that when we met with Frost on that particular day, the savings on the unleaded is 30 cents a gallon, and the diesel was 40 cents a gallon. So, as has been mentioned in the past, there is definite savings. It's not a slam dunk, short-term saving. It's one for the long run, but it's one that will definitely benefit the city. Is there any discussion at all?
Can Alderman gas up there?
Alderman Wozniak?
How long is this contract for, and can we go out when we need gas and bid again?
It's, it's good for one year, and then we would go back out. We looked at month-to-month, talked to some of the other cities, and they discouraged us from doing that. They've had better luck going for one year. They have not gone more than one year. I'm sorry, Alderman Morgan?
I was wondering if Alderman could gas up there?
No.
Nice try.
Good try.
I'll get you an invitation to discuss it with the FBI.
Nope. All right. May I have a motion to approve, please?
So moved. Second.
Okay. Alderman Morgan?
Yes.
Alderman Flynn?
Yes.
Alderman Wozniak?
Yes.
Alderman Anderson?
Yes.
Alderman King?
Yes.
Alderman Wilson?
Yes.
Carries six zero.
All righty.
Carries six zero.
All righty. The final resolution of the evening is amending the 2016 annual city budget to appropriate $340,000 for the purchase of a 2016 KME custom pumper truck for the fire department. At the time that we put this together, we were still sorting out our options, but we were running out of time so that we could get it on the agenda tonight. This evening, you were given an amendment which is amending the 2016 annual city budget to appropriate $105,000 for the purchase of a 2016 KME pumper, excuse me, custom pumper truck for the fire department and making corresponding budget adjustments. Basically, what we're doing is we have an ambulance that is approved in the budget for $220,000. The actual final price, excuse me, of the pumper truck is $324,000 and change. Therefore, the shortfall is 105. I'm rounding. And so what we're asking for approval of is to use the Amendment 78, finance that's in the budget for the ambulance to buy the fire truck, pull 105 out of the reserves, and we're paying cash for the fire truck, and then we will make up our minds later on whether or not we're going to finance the ambulance or pay cash. I have asked the treasurer to go out to the street this week and get us quotes on interest rates for financing the ambulance if we wish to take that route. So it's a little convoluted, but we ran out of time, as I mentioned before, on the original ordinance, and we do have to get this money available as early as tomorrow so that we can wire it to the vendor, and the truck will be on its way coming here.
Mayor, what we need to do, since the other version was in the packet and part of the agenda, there'll need to be a motion to amend and a second, and then a vote, and then we'll need to have a final motion on approval and second and a vote. We need to have two votes.
All right. So I'd entertain a motion amending the original that was in the packet to the amendment that was given to you this evening.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? My apologies for it being so convoluted.
Alderman Wilson.
Yes.
Alderman King.
Yes.
Alderman Anderson.
Yes.
Alderman Wozniak.
Yes.
Alderman Flynn.
Yes.
Alderman Morgan.
Yes.
Carries six zero.
And then finally, a motion to.
Motion to approve the resolution.
To approve the resolution as amended.
So moved. Second.
Further discussion? Roll call, sir.
All right. Alderman Morgan.
Yes.
Alderman Flynn.
Yes.
Alderman Anderson.
Yes.
Alderman Wozniak.
Yes.
Alderman Wilson.
Yes.
Alderman King.
Yes.
Carries six zero.
Meetings and announcements. The next city council work session will be Monday, August 15, 2016, at 5:30 p.m. in the City Hall Conference Room. The next regular meeting of the city council will be Monday, August 22, 2016, at 6:30 right here in the Legion Hall. The Planning Commission work session will be Thursday, July 28, 2016, at 4:30 in the City Hall Conference Room, and the Planning Commission regular meeting will be August 8, 2016, at 5:30 p.m. in the City Hall Conference Room. Alderman Anderson.
I have a question for the lawyer.
Sir.
Is it proper to attempt to adjust the agenda now? Is that doable? Can we add an item to the agenda without the two-hour notice?
You can, I mean, since we haven't adjourned, you can always move to suspend the rule and add an item to the agenda, but you don't have a proposed ordinance or resolution in front of you to consider.
Well, I'm not sure it has to be an ordinance yet. I just want a discussion.
Well, that's really something for the work session.
Okay.
That's not really, falls within the rules. I guess during the meetings and announcements portion, if there's something, you know, that's been interpreted to allow some general discussion at the very end of the meeting, if you just wanted to do that, you probably could just kind of do that.
Well, the slight difficulty we have at this time is the timing. I would like the folks to know that we're not going to appoint somebody if we're not, or if we are going to appoint somebody if we are, prior to the closure of the period of time that you can file for the job. I don't know how to get that done. That's what I'm trying to accomplish. You tell me how to get it done.
There may be different opinions on how to handle it, and so, of course, when you're dealing with a deliberative body like the council and then a check and balance like the mayor, you have to consider all these things. I guess I would tell you this, if the mayor wanted to put a name forward and have a vote and put it on the agenda at the next regular session, it would be on there, and you wouldn't have to vote to approve it, I guess, if you weren't ready to do that. But I don't think you could prohibit that from happening if that's what the mayor wanted to do. Likewise, if one of you wanted to propose a resolution appointing someone and put it on the agenda next month, then there's nothing to keep any of you from doing that. So there's really no way to keep someone from putting something on the agenda for consideration if they want to do it.
But that doesn't solve the problem of allowing the community to know that there will or won't be an incumbent running for office.
Well, that's.
Is there no way to do that? With the timing of the office filing imminent?
Not that I'm aware of. I mean, certainly, you as elected officials can make assurances that you don't intend to do anything until after that period of time. That's not binding on you. Any of you aldermen could make that decision. You wouldn't be prepared to do that. The mayor could make that decision. Even if you voted on a resolution to say, we're not going to do anything next month, you could always get rid of that next month and do what you wanted to do, because you can't really bind yourself that way. So you always have the ability to act if the rules allow you to act.
Is there anything preventing us from having a special meeting to discuss this one topic?
You can call a special work session if you want to discuss one issue. We've done that in the past. I think that would, I mean, we just changed our rules about special meetings, and we can't do a special meeting for something that is not an emergency really, or something that we could not wait until the next meeting. I can't, could wait until the next meeting. Let me tell you a little bit about the law on this. If we were a city of under 20,000, being a city of the first class, we would be legally obligated to appoint someone at the next meeting after the vacancy. But since we're over 20,000, state law doesn't put that mandate on us, but it does require us to fill it, so.